So I hello, appreciate you all for showing up. And I'm going to ask, now that we're getting started, just to let you all know, we're going to be recording this. And so we'll just be recording the panel discussion portion so that our members who aren't able to be here can watch it later. We'll also be uploading this on YouTube and onto our website. So if there are certain things that you missed or want to get clarified, you can visit our website probably in a week, or we'll have that uploaded. And with that, I am just going to get started. So appreciate you all for coming here today. Today's roundtable discussion is focused on who are our county supervisors? And what are some strategies that our speakers have, based on their lived experience to influence them? This is coming out of a recent survey that we did of our members. These are our active members in our working groups. And folks really wanted to kind of, there was some uneven levels of understanding on who the power players are, who the elected officials are at the county. And so we decided to host this roundtable discussion. And folks also said that they wanted to hear from people who are not necessarily in DAC, but are allies and who have experience from a variety of perspectives. And so I just want to just give hella kudos to folks who are on the DAC outreach team, who helped put this together. Feel free to like raise your hand or like do a quick cool emoji so that you can make yourself known. Others, please give them a bunch of appreciation. I know I tend to moderate these meetings, but this was made possible by a whole group of people who put together the questions and you know, thought all of this through really thoughtfully. So yeah, just wanting to lift up Ryan and Jenny and Sophie and Olivia and whoever else I may be missing in the DAC outreach team. Dope. All right. So in terms of a run of show, the agenda today is, before we start the roundtable discussion, we are going to talk about what is DAC? For folks who are new, if this is your first meeting, we're just going to give you a very quick primer on who DAC is, what we do. And then we're also going to give you a very brief primer on who the Board of Supervisors are and show you how to find out who your Board of Supervisors are if you don't know. And then from there, we'll go to a really rad roundtable discussion with Lonnie Hancock, Yolanda Wang, and Cynthia Munoz. We ask you to reserve your questions. At the end, we have about 20 minutes dedicated to Q and A. So please try to save your questions at the end for that. And so with that, I'm going to pass it to our brand new Decarcerate Alameda County full-time organizer Cynthia Munoz to introduce herself. This is her first DAC meeting as an organizer. This is a big deal for us. So I'm going to pass the torch to you Cynthia.
Thanks, Tash. Hi, everyone. I'm Cynthia. I use she/her pronouns. As Tash said, I am officially the new DAC organizer. I'm super excited to hopefully be working with all of you. Just a little introduction for me, I was born in Hayward. My family's from Hayward, originally from Mexico. My mom migrated here when she was a kid. And yeah, I mean, I got into this work because unfortunately in 2018, my cousin Augie Gonzalez was killed by Hayward Police. So since then, this work has pretty much consumed my life in some of the best ways and in some of the hardest ways. I've been doing work like this for many years, but since then, it's just, like I said, just something that's been calling my name on a professional level. And I hope to use my cousin's name to push me in my future and succeed so I can make him proud. And yeah, I'm really excited to be doing this. This is my birth, my first big DAC event, so I'm a little nervous. So bear with me. Just a gentle reminder for any folks that want or need to use closed captioning. Jenny had pasted in the chat, if you click the more button, it should give you an option. Or depending on your Zoom account, it might just already be on the bottom saying closed captions. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to someone for help. And yeah, I guess we could get started if we can get the screen up. Perfect. Thank you. So just to get things started, so I want to kind of just go over what DAC is, who we are. DAC is an acronym for Decarcerate Alameda County. We're a growing coalition of many organizations and different community members that are joining together for common goals. For example, freeing people from Santa Rita Jail, divesting from incarceration and policing, and investing into the community health and not cops. So if you look here, just a part of our steering committee consists of 67 Sueños, American Friends Service Committee, Anti-Policed Terror Project, Communities United for Restorative Youth Justice, Ella Baker Center for Human Rights, the Hayward Community Coalition, Human Impact Partners, Justice Reinvestment Coalition of Alameda County, Moms for Housing and Restore Oakland. So there is a link on this slide for folks that are interested in checking us out or maybe interested in reaching out for membership or just questions. Please don't hesitate to reach out to us. We could go ahead and go to the next slide. So kind of just want to go over like DAC's goals. So we're working on some, a few different things. One, a couple of the main things are freeing people from Santa Rita Jail. So we are asking that the district attorney, the courts, and the sheriff's department decarcerate Santa Rita Jail 50% by 2022. So as of January 2021, there are currently 2,100 people in Santa Rita Jail with a pre-trial population at 94%. I actually think that's 96% now, but Tash, correct me if I'm wrong. There should be no more than 1,050 people at Santa Rita Jail by 2022 is what the goal is. We're also asking to divest from incarceration and policing. We're asking that the Board of Supervisors defund the sheriff by 50% by 2024 or 2026. So we're asking between a three to five year period. So in fiscal year 2021, the sheriff's budget is currently at $500 million. We're asking to take that money and invest it in community health. So asking that again, the Board of Supervisors redirect the about 250 million from the sheriff's office into life-affirming resources that would include community-based pre-trial, reentry, and housing services. Just to make our community safer, to make it a more safe community and work with folks and build like community-based relationships for you know, healing, restorative justice and all the good stuff. So I will pass it on to Tash for a moment of silence as well.
Oh, awesome. And perhaps we can just stop sharing our screen momentarily and come back to it after this portion. But we did want to make space to recognize that another person has been, has died inside of Santa Rita Jail. We just got news that a woman died in Santa Rita Jail on April 2nd. We just found out about this on Friday. This is the 50th death in the jail since 2014. The second suicide in the jail this year. And so we want to just create, have a moment of silence to mourn and celebrate the lives of people who we've lost in Santa Rita. We currently don't know the name of this woman yet, but the name, we do know the name of the young person Jonas Park, who died in the quarantine unit of Santa Rita back in February. And so I invite you all to take some deep breaths and have a moment of silence and send love to them and their families as they make their way and find some peace to the next plane. So if you can take a deep breath and send some energy to Jonas Park. Another breath to this woman that we lost on April 2nd. And a collective breath to everyone we've lost in Santa Rita. And as we come back, just send really good vibes, healing energy, vibes of comfort and ease to folks who are currently behind bars right now. So as we come back, I just wanted to do, quickly let people know that Decarcerate Alameda has for years been working on addressing mental health inside the, inside the jail. And we know that a lot of the root causes to why folks with mental illness are in the jails because there's a lack of housing, there's a lack of community-based healthcare, and there's an overcriminalization of poor folks of color in Alameda County. And so we have actually introduced a resolution called the Care First Resolution that we hope to be introduced, I believe, on May 10th now at the Health Committee meeting. And so we are really asking folks, our members, our prospective members, all of you and all of your friends who care about mental health, who care about decarcerating the jails, who care about saving lives and preventing future suicides and deaths, to roll with us on May 10th to the Health Committee meeting. Additionally, we are planning a response to these deaths. And so if you are an active member in Decarcerate Alameda County's working groups, you'll have received an email today from Cynthia Munoz about, you know, getting more involved about this. And so if you're new and you're interested in learning more about us, I really encourage you to check out our website. We'll be uploading our resolution. Follow us on Instagram. Those are really good ways to get involved. And you can also hit up Cynthia directly and she'll fold you into the work. And so now I'll pass it over to Jenny to teach us about who the Board of Supervisors are.
Thanks, Tash, and thanks for that update. My name's Jenny. I use she/her pronouns trying to navigate these slides. And so in thinking about the power of the Board of Supervisors, we also want to acknowledge, you know, what is it that they have domain over? What is the difference between what the county manages and what the city manages? And so I'm only going to cover kind of two very brief areas. And I hope that for those, this is quite a wealth of knowledge in this Zoom room here, so others can also share some of the differences hopefully in the chat. So between Alameda County, the operations budget of Alameda County is $3.5 billion compared with Oakland, the largest city in the county, who has a general budget of 600, around $600 million. So we're looking at quite a significant difference in the amount of financial power in these two different areas. In terms of law enforcement, the county manages the sheriff's office. And so that includes our local jail, Santa Rita, as well as the previous jails that were, that have been open. And the sheriff's office manages evictions. I'm sure they have all other kinds of things as they try to stretch their power. And I also would hope folks can share in the chat what it is that also the sheriff's office has done. The city, the city police department, they regulate traffic incidents, quote unquote, violent crimes and 911 calls. So I'm curious if folks are familiar with who their Board of, who is their supervisor representative? So encourage you to go if you're not familiar. Maybe if you already know, sharing in the chat, it would be helpful to know, you know, what is the distribution among Decarcerate Alameda County in terms of the various representatives? So if you could share in your chat, in the chat, who your representative is? And if you don't know, then go to acgov.org/Board. Scroll down to the bottom, click on look up your supervisor. Put in your home address, your residence, and then find out who your, who your supervisor is. Looks like we got some Carsons, lots of Carsons. Okay. This is where Halbert, great, looking to see what kind of, you know, representation we have here. So I'm going to move ahead so we can find out a little bit more about each of the supervisors. So Miley's here. Chan. So great. It looks like we have many of them covered here. So let's see. Also, sorry, before I move in, I wanted to give a visual representation of what Alameda County looks like and what the various districts are. And so as you can see, some good old gerrymandering has happened. And there is no real clear rhyme or reason for why these districts are drawn up as they are. But District 1 outlines what we call kind of East County, includes Fremont, Sanol, Livermore, and Dublin. District 2, what we often frame as South County, Newark, Hayward, Union City. District 3 includes San Leandro, San Lorenzo, part of Oakland, Alameda. District 4 Pleasanton, East Oakland, Castro Valley, and some unincorporated areas. And District 5 includes Albany, Berkeley, Emeryville, Oakland, Piedmont, and a weird little piece of Oakland as well. I actually think I may live in that little squiggle. So in terms of finding out what do these supervisors, where do they lie in terms of what of DAC's goals? So District 1, and I keep saying his name wrong. I think it is Halbert. Halbert? Someone, please correct me. He's a first-term supervisor, the previous mayor of Oakland. And a pretty big clue into what his values are is that he was endorsed and his campaign was partially funded by the sheriff. So you can only imagine how he feels about our similar issues. Also fun fact is apparently he wants to limit the county's access to abortion. So super, super all-around great guy. For in District 2, we have again, what we have often referred to as South County. That is Supervisor Vaillée. He has been a supervisor since 2012. He is up for election in 2024, like many of our supervisors. He was the Board of President in the last term. He's a member of the Public Protections Committee. He co-coordinates Dig Deep Farms, which is a kind of rehabilitation, reentry program with the sheriff. He's often been a swing vote on DAC issues. In District 3, this San Lorenzo, San Leandro, Oakland, Alameda, we have Wilma Chan. She is a member of the Health Committee, so someone who will be hearing about the Care First campaign, which she is a champion of. She has often been a champion for DAC issues and strongly dislikes the sheriff's office. She was one of two votes against the vote to increase the sheriff's budget back in May last year. District 4, East Oakland, those unincorporated areas, Castro Valley and Pleasanton. Nate Miley, he is the second longest-term supervisor, member of the Public Protections Committee again. He endorsed Halbert's campaign. So again, a little key into what his values are. He prioritizes the unincorporated areas in his district over East Oakland. And so thinking about the, the people that live in those areas, the values that he, that he holds and who he chooses to represent. He also has strong ties with the sheriff's office, who because those are not, those are unincorporated areas, they do not have their own police force. So the sheriff's office then is the default police in those areas. He felt the need to justify why he voted to increase the funding to the sheriff in the middle of the pandemic. So interesting article. And finally, our last representative that we're going to be discussing is our, in the north part of the county, Keith Carson, our longest-running supervisor. He's the current Board of Supervisor President and the other member of the Health Committee. So we'll be listening as we present about the Care First campaign. He generally supports Decarcerate Alameda County, but it has not been-
Pause for a minute. We have a request for pause for interpretation.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I can't see the chat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Keith Carson has generally been supportive of Decarcerate Alameda County, but is not an outspoken champion. So another person that we wanted to highlight today is not an elective position. It is our county administrator, Susan Muranishi. She was appointed to this position and again, does not have constituents because she is not elected. In the role as county administrator, she makes recommendations to the Board and is apparently high school friends with Keith Carson. I also encourage everyone, as we share, when we share these slides after, to read this article about Susan Muranishi and what she will be doing to our county budget when she retires. And with that, I'm going to stop and pass it back over to Tash.
All right. Thank you so much for that quick little primer on how the Board of Supervisors are, Jenny. And I also really deeply appreciate folks in the chat to kind of add to the conversation. We are, you know, this is a learning moment. I think collectively, we know a lot about the Board of Supervisors. And as we continue to organize, we will learn more. And before we get started, I do want to just note that the people who have power in this county is us, not them. They work for us. We elect them, our tax dollars go to pay them, and we have the power to influence their decision-making and to influence their choices and to help create the political will for them to be doing the right thing. And so I just really want to note that is that the folks who have the most power in this county is the electorate and also us as organizers, us as residents. And so with that, I am going to move to the roundtable discussion and introduce our speakers. And so we are so glad to have Cynthia Munoz here. I know I accidentally named Cynthia Munoz earlier. Both really great friends of mine. And but Cynthia Munoz Ramos is Supervisor Vaillée's Legislative Director. She organizes with working-class communities of color to contest for power and win. From 2007 to 2015, Cynthia led the immigrant rights organizing work for Causa Justa, Just Cause. During this period at Causa Justa, Just Cause, she carried out campaigns to fight the entanglement of deportation programs with local police enforcement to pass policies to protect and advance the rights of immigrants and bring attention to the corporations who financially invest in and benefit from incarceration and deportation of communities of color. Additionally, and in addition to being a badass, Cynthia is a mama, birth worker, and translator. She loves to spend time by the ocean and walk through oak woodlands and redwood forests. She currently is working as the legislative director for Alameda County District 2. So thank you, round of applause. Give Cynthia some love. Next up, I'm going to introduce Lonnie Hancock. Lonnie was elected to the Berkeley City Council in 1971, representing a coalition of anti-Vietnam War civil rights and UC students known as the April Coalition. She later served as the mayor of Berkeley and later still as Assemblywoman and as state senator in the California Legislature. And for those of you who are in the DAC's budget and legislative work group, we are very honored and so proud to have Lonnie as an active member in our coalition. So give her some love, give her a round of applause. All right. And last but not least, we have Yolanda Wang. Yolanda Wang is an immigrant arriving as a young child to the US. A product of US public schools, she graduated from UC Berkeley School of Law and has been practicing attorney in the Bay Area for almost four decades. Currently, her focus has been on conditions of confinement inside local county jails. She represents lots of people who are currently and formerly incarcerated and is a really strong and important ally here in our work. And so she will be sharing the perspective on what it's like to be litigating the county from her perspective. So I just really want to give a full round of applause to everyone who's here to share their wisdom and brilliance with us. You will have three minutes each. I will time you just for equity's sake and so that we have enough time for discussion. And the discussion, the speakers are also welcome to like be responding to each other. We have some questions for all speakers and then also some, at least one question for each of the speaker based on what you do and what you're about. So the first question is for everyone. And from your point of view, who and or what are the influencers on the county supervisors or county council? So we'll start off with Cynthia.
Hi, everyone. Cynthia here. A pleasure. Thanks for your time. For the next two more weeks, your public servant at District 2 and after that no longer. So it's kind of really nice to close out this month with this conversation with you all. So I'll start with sharing, you know, ideally, like sort of the question of like, who are the influencers? You know, we want to say the electorate and we want to say communities impacted. And ideally, that's where it starts and ends. And as we all have experienced over the many collective years of organizing, that's not often it only. And often, it's a very small part of what influences and shapes the politics of the county as well as the politics of the individuals running our county. And I guess I'll say a little bit that one of the, you know, in the process of these folks coming into office as well as staying in office, I do believe that people come in with the intention of doing good in their work. And I've, you know, and conversations I've had with the different supervisors as well as my boss, that, that did come and it's a very clear grounding for them. And they want to have an impact in the community. And there are a lot of competing, I would say, pulls, push power that then shape how people carry out their work in office. I would say one of the really important things is sort of when we look at the county map, looking at what are the issues that they each care about? For example, Supervisor Vaillée really cares about young people. And you all have been really successful in framing the issues, the issues of young people and incarceration, how young folks are impacted. The issues of young people and incarceration, how young folks are impacted by how their families are impacted. And, and, and they also were elected into office and supported by, say, the labor movement or when the sheriff's or the department, the different departments contribute to their campaigns as well as there are bigger projects. So this is like on issue base. There's also the bigger project of running the county, of county governance and what has been the vehicle that's been moving for now a couple of centuries that continues, needs to continue to move. And so the county administrator's role with the supervisor's role is to make sure the healthcare is happening, that services are going now, that we're contracting with community-based organizations. And that often means that a lot of the attention goes to maintaining that wheel running. And so when we decide that there are issues with how that vehicle is running, there is a big, there has to be a really big effort to demand a pause and an examination. And then we don't necessarily just often agree on what the solution or what the issue is. It's sort of like, some of us are mechanics of cars and some of us are mechanics of, okay, that's a really bad analogy. I'm not going to go there. But I do feel like there is, there is a very big difference in the lenses through which we see and different people that come to address issues, see the issues. And so I would say, you know, the impact that supervisors want to have influences a lot how they carry out their job as well as labor. Labor is a strong, strong influencer in our county politics. And then organizing and, and then each other. Because as they have to work with the administrator, they also have to work with each other on issues they care about. And they have to gain each other's trust and collaborative collaboration to advance projects that they can't do on their own, especially when they're big infrastructure projects or big budget items for their constituents. And then election cycles. It is true that often, you know, starting 2021, 2022, the supervisors that are running in 2022 are going to start looking at what decisions they make and how they're having an impact in community and those that got them elected, the electorate itself, as well as the unions that supported them, as well as the different political powers that support them to ensure that they are, that they will secure their support for the next round of elections. Am I at three minutes? Cause I can't see Tash.
Yeah, 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 time.
Oh, my bad.
No, you're good. Awesome. Thank you. Do you have any last, last bits you want to say before we pass it on?
I mean, I think as challenging as it is, organizing is what gets the goods and organizing is what shifts and changes both political will, shapes political will and changes decisions. And Alameda County is not an easy place to do that around criminal justice efforts.
All right. And with that, we're going to be passing it over to Yolanda. Yolanda, can you share from where you sit, who and what influences the supervisors? I know you don't work directly with them, but you, I know you talk to county council, which is the county's lawyers. When you're litigating on behalf of folks who are inside, so please share us your thoughts.
I started working in terms of the Board of Supervisors after realignment was passed. And we were trying to get the board to develop a more progressive understanding of what realignment would mean and how the county jail could work to reduce prison population in California. What was interesting to me in that basis is that the actual technical knowledge among the Board of Supervisors was very shallow and that none of them could explain to me how the actual budget worked, the budget process for the sheriff worked and what the line items in the budget worked. And from what I've done with various government institutions, to me, what controls action is the, is, are the dollars, how the dollars are allocated, who gets to control what dollar goes where and who has the luxury of moving money around? That that's to me is what I perceive is the real power in government. When you look at the, 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 the agenda for the county, it's all about allocating dollars to different programs and how much of the dollars they're going to allocate. And so what I see for the sheriff is he really exercises 500% control over his budget. He has a lot of power because he has a lot of money he can move around. And when I asked to be given a budget workshop to teach me and other community members in realignment on how the sheriff's budget worked, that was immediately shut down by Susan Morinishi. And as far as I know, that budget workshop has never taken place, even though there were at least two board members who requested it. So that's what I think the power is. The power is money. And whoever controls the money, controls the power. And part of the reason why the sheriff is so powerful is because he's never run opposed. He has really low campaign expenses and he keeps $250,000 campaign slush fund that he can dole out. He can buy influence by giving $50,000 to the DA in the last two weeks of her campaign when she's running dry. He can give money to the primary person running in Dublin, which is where his jail is, because he's got that kind of money that he doesn't need. And he fundraises every year for it with little fundraisers. And of course, he's got a thousand people on his payroll and all those people donate to his campaign. So that, that to me is where the power is. And the other person is Susan Morinishi. Because she's one of the few people that can sit down and break down what a budget and her budget analyst, what the budget is, how the budget is calculated, what these line items mean. When we asked for a budget during realignment, she gave a budget in which there was no word explanations. They were only budget category numbers. And if you didn't know what those numbers meant, then the, the, the dollar amounts in those budgets had no meaning whatsoever. And I could say that I sat down with the Board Supervisor member and they couldn't explain to me what this budget was. So this is where the power is and this is why they, whatever the word is acquiesce to her recommendations because the board doesn't have that actual knowledge. That's one thing. The second thing is with the county council, it, I'm flabbergasted. They, she doesn't, from what I understand, she doesn't put her illegal opinions in writing. She just tells them orally what her opinions are and they don't fact checker. They don't have someone else run a counter legal opinion and they feel stymied by it. So I have had, I have had staff members of at least two Board of Supervisors tell me that she has told them, county council has verbally told them that there's no written legal memo, that the Board of Supervisors has no power over the sheriff period. And this includes using finances, budget control to create policy, which is crazy. Because if they're the ultimate policymakers and they allocate the budget, the fact that they are saying to me that they can't use the budget to mandate policy in the sheriff's office is nutso, but that's the way they seem to be operating.
One more minute, Yolanda.
Yeah. So as far as I'm concerned, the, the way it's been going with sheriffs, sheriffs in the state are notoriously insular is what is being coming, coming out, what is it, 271? To allow anybody to run for sheriff, not just people who can have a license to carry a gun or a post train and to weaken the power of the sheriff. So the sheriff in our county is the coroner. He signs off on, on death certificates, which gives him a whole lot of power when people die in his jail. He is also the emergency responder for all of Northern California. I believe from Santa Cruz to the Oregon border. So it's a whole lot of power and it's a whole lot of money. And that's why I think our board just sort of just lets him do what he wants to do because they don't know how to control him and they don't know how much money he has or what he can do.
Thank you so much for sharing that. The chat is, the chat is vibing off of everything you're saying, Yolanda.
Lonnie has to say, because I'm sure she's.
Yes, we're going to go to Lonnie and this is important because Lonnie's been mayor, Lonnie's been a state legislator. There's a lot of coordination of decisions and care that, and services that kind of go into what she does. So Lonnie, from where you stand in all your years of doing this work, you know, based on what you've learned on the current set of county supervisors, what are the things that influence them? You can also include the county administrator or count and or county council. And you are muted. So you got to unmute yourself.
There you go. Yes. Tash, and I want to really associate myself with the remarks of the two previous speakers. And I really agree pretty much completely with what both of them said. It takes me back frankly, to what I have brought up a few times in our budget hearings. What matters is three votes, folks, from, on a five vote Board of Supervisors. And the way the county is districted, it makes that very difficult to get and that is one of our challenges. I do understand however, that the sheriff will have an opponent in the next election, that an African American woman, maybe from the sheriff's department from San Francisco, but who lives in Alameda County is planning to challenge him. Food for thought. What are the influencers in my experience? Number one, I have heard over and over again that this particular Board of Supervisors is focused almost entirely on what's in it for their district. And they can work together on various deals. But it, our organizing has to be district based because David Halbert or Nate Miley or Richard Vaya doesn't care what a bunch of Keith Carson's constituents think. So how do we do that? Another thing they care about is what do my constituents care about? Both in terms of the general atmosphere, like is the world in general worried about homelessness? That will make them much more interested in housing, right? Or whatever the issue is. Also, what do the organized groups in my district care about? And organized labor is extremely important in Alameda County. Valle has a particular relationship with local seven, 70 of the Teamsters. And the question is, do we have relationships with any of those organizations? But churches, environmentalists, mental health advocates, all kinds of organized people they do care about. I definitely agree with Cynthia that the people generally come in because they want to do good for their community. And especially in an almost invisible elected office like Supervisor. They ease on over where the money is, as one person said to me. And they ease on over where it's easy to be. I think that in our board, we have values that range from conservative to very, very progressive. And we seem to have some people that really would probably ask, who care if I do this or don't do this? Who will be mad at me if I do this? This is where the sheriff and others can become powerful. I know that the sheriff helped Nate Miley, for instance, get the youth, the youth center in his, it's either in Ashland or Cherryland, it's the unincorporated area. I think he must feel he owes the sheriff. That's why we don't get much traction with him when it comes down. So basically, we've got to really focus on district organizing and who are our allies in Valle, Miley and Halbert's district? That will become people who can go to them and have an influence on them.
Thank you. Exactly. Three minutes. Go Lonnie. So for the next question, it's just for Cynthia, Cynthia Munoz. From your experience, what are the supervisor, what are the factors the supervisors consider when making policy and budget decisions? So, you know, we're in the business of shifting policies so that folks who are mentally ill, folks who are pre-trial, folks, like folks just shouldn't be in the jail, especially if we have a 96% pre-trial population, right? So, you know, we're making these budget demands, we're making these policy demands. What are the factors maybe your boss considers in, when we present him with these things? And if you know anything about other supervisors, what do they consider?
Yeah. I almost feel like everything I said before stands, you know, around. I think when they're making policy and budget decisions, it does start with, how does this impact my county? And it is true, there's a very strong sentiment in the board of like criminal justice issues. We only hear from, from North County. How is, you know, South County being impacted? When South County has a majority of the youth in the juvenile justice system. And also, you know, when it comes to like unhoused folks, there's often a competition, which we also see in Oakland politics of, and I wouldn't say they think it's a competition, but it shows up as this where it's sort of like, what services are we moving to this encampment or the other encampment? And why are we not moving any of those to South County or unincorporated areas where we don't have the same services that some of the cities do have? Apologies, I'm going to slow down. And so I think what they do consider, I do believe that there is the staff folks working for the supervisors. And this is of course very biased on my part. Like people really do want to understand the issues, those working on the issues. Folks that work on criminal justice, I would say the maj, the majority of the people that I know on the fifth floor care about it. And often depending on the office you're in, we are internally battling with our boss and coworkers or being told to serve as rather gatekeepers or people who then filter through folks. So then the supervisor doesn't have to deal with them all the time. Or if the supervisor's made a decision, then you're sort of often given just the runaround with staffers. And so there, I think the impact is all the same, like labor, the, the relationship with the sheriff, how it's impacting the sheriff, what, how it's impacting budgets, how it's impacting the, you know, youth center that we want to build in Hayward and how X relationship that one of the supervisors is leveraging with X foundation to ensure that we get some funding may or may not be impacted. Or will you do public health and I do public protections, stay in your lane? Like there is some of that as well. And then I think around budget decisions, there has been an effort from community to demand more transparency and accountability. And that created the budget working group. And I know that folks have tried to engage with that budget working group. And initially, I believe it started, you know, it has some big community organizations who are impacted by the budget in big ways. But it's now become this other committee that it's sort of moves like any other committee where active issues that really impact people are not, are not showing up. I'm at 36 seconds, sorry. I totally intended to have this be more of a shared space because I do think everything that Yolanda and Lonnie shared still stands on this question. And then I think that honestly, the strongest tool continues to be organizing, but organizing from a relationship building place, because you do need those relationships with. Apologies, Juan and then Carson being interpreted to. You do need, I will finish on this stat. You do need to build relationships with the supervisors and you need to build relationships with the people, people that they are accountable to outside of clearly the sheriff. You know, labor, there are big openings there with folks in labor who really want to do good for our communities. And I would say, continue to explore those spaces where there is room to influence those folks, to influence the supervisors continues to be really important. And also the other ways that we create power and bring attention to the issues through organizing and direct action. But the relationship building of aspects or of, of the aspect of organizing can't be lost because that is when folks are dismissive and say things like, well, that's North County again. Or how is that going to impact Ashland Cherryland? And I think it's a, it's a challenge to balance those things honestly, from both an organizer perspective and from being on the fifth floor hearing how folks receive and interpret the community organizing going on outside.
Awesome. All right. I want to do, please invite all speakers to speak more slowly. That will probably mean that what you have to say is less in order to fit within the time. But the next question is for everybody. And I also want to ask the audience to save your questions till the end. If you have a direct question for us. If you have a direct question for a speaker, maybe private message them. Or yeah, we're ju- we're just trying to keep things focused here. So the next question is for everybody. How can we make Dax mission to decarcerate and reinvest a top priority for county supervisors? This is just your ideas, there are no right and wrong answers, just curious to hear what you think. And so with that, we'll start with Lonnie.
Okay, I'll try to do this in three minutes, everybody. My rule of thumb in carrying any issue that I care about and working with advocates is number one, the issue has to be urgent and recognized as important in the community as a whole. And then it has to be pushed unrelentingly, like showing up to talk at all those meetings. And okay, that's one. If it's if the community at large doesn't think it's important and doesn't think something must be done to fix it, nothing much is gonna happen in terms of new things happening. Secondly, I believe in proposing solutions. That's where our data and research is so important. But proposing a solution and then organizing around it. And that it helps very, very much to have a precedent. It can be anything from Scandinavia to LA County in terms of incarceration. And I, that's why I love care first, jail last. Because out of, you know, LA County is doing it. And they even canceled a contract for a prison. And they are diverting money so that they can have the spectrum of care that's needed for care first, jail last. You, another thing that has to happen is there has to be press. That makes things important, real and urgent. And that means honestly, we need to develop personal relationships, sometimes with reporters, writing op-eds, sharing information, calling somebody and saying, this is a story, you wanna cover it. And and ourselves generating op-eds. Things like demonstrations get press, state hearings get a little press. So those are all things. And then tying to other issues. People care about homelessness right now. There's they care about mental health right now. They care about spending money wisely. And one thing we've all learned, I think, is that incarceration is a really wasteful way to spend our money. It's all on the back end, not on the front end of of people's lives. So forming coalitions in the supervisor's district, I think is something that's very important that we do.
Awesome. All right, let's go to Yolanda. What do you think?
I think that what's become obvious to me is the jail has a very effective public relations setup. And whenever anything happens, they get their version of the truth out. And they work relentlessly at making sure that the public does not get a peek at what's really going on. That they do everything they can to make information, real information what's going on in the jails difficult. So what you hear from the sheriff, what you hear from his lawyers, what you hear from his command staff is that this is a terrific jail. I mean, they say that this is a great jail, this is a gold standard jail. We are the envy of everybody else. So all of you guys are just wacko, right? You don't know the truth and they won't let you know the truth. So to me, not only do you need to organize, but you need to have a consistent messaging machine that always puts out, you know, a different reality than what the sheriff is promoting. That's one thing. And I can give you, you know, specifics each and every time because I know these things. The second thing is even though North County is the noisy group, Cherry Land, Hayward, all those places where the sheriff actually does patrol Castro Valley, they their population suffers the brunt of not just the sheriff in terms of incarceration, but the sheriff as the police force. And those people do not feel empowered to speak out. They are afraid and they don't speak out. So organizing in those unincorporated areas, Dublin, is really going to be key so that you have more South County voices in terms of that. I mean, I think that one of the things that happened in terms of jail reform was when Occupy, when they busted three hundred and fifty basically white and a lot of college students. And they all ended up in Santa Rita and were aghast when they were treated like the regular prisoner. How could this possibly be, you know? And that was a big influ- influence in terms of breaking open some of the practices. But for the people, the two thousand twenty two hundred people that are there now, they don't believe they have a voice and they don't know how to exercise that voice. So having some way where people who are incarcerated can get their stories out on a consistent basis and their families get the stories out of what's really going on is really important. Because the contrast between the suicides and the punitive way which the sheriff deals with people in custody versus what the sheriff says about himself needs to be broadened. Otherwise, the the supervisors don't get the complete story.
Right on time. All right, this is so much very important information. So we're gonna go to Cynthia. What do you think?
Um, I think I wanted to add that the race and class dynamics of the district, the district that happened and the districts that are in Alameda County is really important to pay attention as we look to the strategies and the assessment that both Lonnie and Yolanda shared. You know, we have, we do have the who is impacted versus who is the electorate and the other districts that are not North County. It's very different than North County, you know, who is impacted by incarceration. And what I wanted to say around how to make Dax mission a top priority for the county supervisors, I I think is still the organizing and the relationship building. And I think the multiple strategies. I'll slow down. We need multiple strategies that are that involve the honestly, the outside and inside game. I think up to this point, right now, as I see it, this is only my assessment, may or may be wrong. But DAC is very much seen as an outside organization that has relationships with maybe some individuals in DAC have relationships with a couple of supervisors. And even in those relationships, often you as DAC are tasked with doing a ton of work to organize the other folks, being asked by those that are in support of your work. And I believe that thinking about what makes sense for DAC to structure into your organizing around, here are the organizations that are really, really wonderful at base building, turning folks out. And those same organizations exercising their muscles around sitting down at the tables and these meetings and also building those relationships. It doesn't mean that we say yes to everything that the supervisor is saying or that you're sort of acquiesce into their issues. But it does mean that you're building a collaborative relationship where right now, I think that is pretty diminished with district two's office, I would say. And there's a, it's a very new one that needs to be developed with District One. It's an established one, you know, you all share your assessment on the supervisors, which I think are pretty dead on. And I do think that in order to make Dax mission a reality, that organizing and relationship building needs to be different and grow differently. And that doesn't mean compromising, but it does mean thinking creatively about how else to engage them and and build power that way. You, if you continue to be seen as an outside folks who come and make a lot of noise when they do, then you're also now seen as someone to sit down with and think creatively about how to transform Alameda County to get to that fifty percent of incarceration. It's honestly not gonna happen through a direct action alone. Not given who we have on the board, you know? Maybe we transform that board to be different, maybe there are campaigns that happen in twenty twenty two that make that possible. But that is not the case right now. And I would say that's the biggest thing that I know. What did it say, the timer?
You're done. Sorry, you were saying so many good things, I forgot to give you a warning.
No, I'm done. That's, I mean, I think that's my main thing for you all as all.
Amazing. Thank you so much for the real talk and keeping it a hundred with us. We need that. All right, so this next question is for Yolanda, and I'm gonna just contextualize it a bit. So the question before we go into it. But lately, we have been kind of really at, in addition to the Board of Supervisors, in addition to Susan Marinishi, the county administrator who does all the budgeting and holds the purse strings. We've also been up against county council, her name is Donna Ziegler. So for example, we are introducing a care first resolution, right? That is about decar- ending the county's reliance on jailing people with mental illness, building out community-based mental health care. Seems pretty amazing, right? Unfortunately, the county's jail is being sued relentlessly by Yolanda, by all kinds of people all the time. And so we, here's a perfect example. We were told that our resolution was gonna go to the Health Committee April twenty sixth. The county council talks to the Board of Supervisors, sees our resolution and says, no, we're currently being sued around mental health in the jail. We cannot work on this resolution until, uh, work on anything regarding mental health and in incarceration until we settle our lawsuits. Well, there's multiple ongoing that don't end. And our resolution is actually not about improving the jail, it's about improving community health care. So with that said, the question to Yolanda is, what have you learned from litigating the county on how they make decisions? Yes, and this will be very helpful for us in the next coming weeks.
Problem with litigation is it's so many layers of buffers. So I don't talk, very seldom do I actually talk to the command staff at the jail. I talk to their lawyers and their lawyers talk to their command staff. And what you have as a problem with problem solving is the command staff has all risen through the ranks from deputy on. They'd never worked anywhere else in their life. And they don't know any other way of doing anything except the way they do it. So they can't possibly come up with a creative way to resolve the problem. Whenever you come up with a problem, they always say no, you know? So what I would say to the community is, there is a major litigation happening. I'm not dealing with it. Rosenbean, the firm is dealing with it. I would say you guys should insert yourself to Rosenbean and say, we want you to do X, Y, and Z. Because that's not what they're doing. They're sitting there pretending like they represent everybody in the jail and they never even talk to those people in the jail. And they don't talk to you guys and they're not talking to county health. I think that what needs to happen, and this is a problem, that in order to have real creative and effective solutions, the community has to be brought in and you guys need to demand to be part of that solution. And if county council says they, the board can't talk to you because they're litigating, then go to Rosenbean and go to the, uh, and say, we wanna be part of that conversation. Because if you don't, we will oppose your settlement. I mean, you gotta throw a little weight around, you know? We're gonna oppose your settlement for the judge because you're not considering the real interests of other people involved, including the people that rep- that they claim to represent in in the, in the jails. I mean, I can give you more details and ideas later. But I kinda feel like that, you know, it needs to be a, 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 a little more muscular because the county council says something and the whole board goes boo, right? And then there's nothing for you to say. Uh, that's where I think running op-eds, talking about the suicide, getting positions out, demanding a KTV interview you guys, finding out who it is, uh, doing a Public Records Act request and and pushing it. I mean, I think that Urban Shield was incredibly effective because those people were relentless. I I'm on their email chain, I can't believe how much time they put into this. They went to every meeting, they told everybody about every meeting, they prepared for every meeting. They had spokespeople and with point to every meeting. They, and it took them five years, right? It was incredible. But I think that to get something done that you decide is significant, if it is the mental health piece, which is worthwhile, you know, it'd be great. Or any other piece that that does this at the jail is worthwhile and great. That's what it's gonna take for you to blow them over is to not give them any space to hide. Because that's what they're doing now. They're hiding behind the litigation so that you, they don't have to listen to you and you can't let them do that.
And thank you. I'm wondering if Cynthia has any things to say, you know? Your office actually talks to county council. We've actually had your boss change his mind after a conversation with county council. We had him behind us for an audit. She, he talked to her and told us straight up, I'm changing my mind. So do you have any insight on? I'm clearly, we're like, John and I were talking earlier, we need to expose this lady, like she's, uh, we need to put pressure on her. But I'm wondering if you have any other insight you wanna share with our members?
Yeah, I mean, the Uwazi fight was y'all, just a different version of you. So you know, to Yolanda's point. And then around county council, I mean, earlier I said, so county council's position on the sheriff and whether or not the sheriff can do X, Y, and Z or not, or whether supervisors can tell the sheriff what to do, is based on state, her interpretation of state policy. And or state statute. And my insight into that at the moment is we were only able to win in advance, actual materially, some stuff around immigrants being detained held longer at the, in the county jail through changing statewide policy. And I'm not saying that therefore we don't do anything at the county level, but I do think that there is something.
Yep.
We need to pause for interpretation. I'm gonna pause and then Juan tell us when we can continue.
And you have thirty seconds Cynthia, because we didn't plan to ask you this question, so sorry. I saw that smirk, so.
It's all good.
Cool.
Um, I mean, it, I think the organizing to ground the supervisors in your interpretation of the law and your interpretation of how to advance any demand on the sheriff or change of policy or rebud- or budget decisions is a focus. So that what has happened often does not happen. Because if she is coming to him with, here's a legal opinion of why, et cetera. The only time I've ever seen us have any success in challenging her legal opinion is when the opinion that our folks or lawyers have is stronger and grounds them in it. And there's been enough trust, relationship building that has happened that makes us so.
Great, so we gotta build relationships with Donna.
No, I meant with the supervisors. Trust you more than he trusts or they or she trusts.
Right.
Council and can be ready to challenge county council with actual knowledge and law.
Great. So the next question is for Lonnie. Uh, and this is around, you know, Lonnie's been mayor, been in the state legislature. And we're asking this because, you know, we're in a moment in time where at the Oakland city level, we have cities and states intervening into providing mental health care because the county has failed to do so, even though it is actually the county's responsibility to be providing mental health care, right? And so there is a potential strategy that we could try to enact where we get all the cities in Alameda County and we get folks from the state to go to the county and say, hey, why aren't you doing your job? Come on, let's decarcerate the jail, let's invest upstream. So Lonnie, how have cities and and the state in the past influenced the county? Or what are some, what are some things that have been good successes we can learn from?
Well, Tash, you gave me this question a couple of days ago. And I sat there and I thought to myself, my God, I can hardly think of any time that anybody has influenced Alameda County Board of Supervisors. And I finally came up with one and it was a big success story. And it was the Ella Baker Center Books Not Bars when they were gonna build that big new jail. when they were gonna build that big new jail. And um, I think we need to go back and into the archives at Ella Baker and find out exactly what they did. Because mostly the Board of Supervisors is an invisible body and it, they feel very insulated and they are very insulated. I, I think that Cynthia hit the nail on the head a little bit with the state policy can change supervisors. I mean, believe me, they fought tooth and nail against realignment because I was heading those committees when we did realignment. And they are fighting on a lot of levels, which is why I think we need to get to know our state representatives. And we also need to um, see if we could get state hearings or a state audit and publicize, publicize, publicize. You know, I, I do really believe it's important to be relentless. I know that at the state level, for years, we had no countervailing organizations to law enforcement in the committee. And then they had something called Crime Victims United, which was almost entirely funded by the Prison Guards Union. Then a bunch of foundations stepped in and funded Californians for Safety and Justice. And all of a sudden, we get ten crime victims coming up and saying, you're not gonna make me feel safe by passing this bad law. You're gonna make me feel safe if you do the right thing. And we were able to get a lot done thanks to them. And then they did an initiative. At the end of the day, if we can organize enough, you can always do an initiative in Alameda County and that focuses the mind wonderfully of supervisors and their constituents. So I wish that I could come up with a whole list of things that people got done in Alameda County, but I can't. And I think it's pretty scandalous that we have no mental health system to speak of in this county. And that's why this work is so important because there should be a place for every person that has mental health struggles in this county, whether they're homeless or, or have serious mental illness. And they should be a place for them to go in crisis and then there should be supportive housing and services available to them in the community. And I think that's a point we can make and people will get it. Um, but we have to have all these other organizing things coming into play.
I, I wanna add just one point. It's not, it's not just that the jail has no mental health facilities and provides really terrible mental health services. It's the fact that the jail is structured, structurally is set up to create mental health problems. If you don't have a mental health problem when you go to jail, you will develop one while you are in jail because that is how they see their role. And I am constantly responding to people who are freaking out because they don't understand why the meanness and the punitive dehumanization exists in that jail. And that's one of the reasons why Santa Rita has such a high suicide rate. So I think people need to understand, it's not just the fact that it's people coming in with mental health, but it's the fact that the jail is set up to create mental health crisis as a way to break people down. And I think that's, we, we can't let go of that idea, that it is creating a mental health crisis.
And I think from having done a lot of work in the prison system, I have become convinced you cannot do mental health treatment in jail or prison. I mean, I've never seen a good example of it. Let me put it that way, never. And, and I do think it makes mental health problems that exist worse. So, so we have to, I think, expose that and talk about it and get the money out of that system. The Alameda County Supervisors granted, you know, they gave three hundred and fourteen million dollars to improve mental health in the jail. You could do a lot in the community by diverting that money. And that needs to be, I think, a focus as well.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Big round of applause for everyone who just shared. I know, thank you. Uh, we are, we had one more question, but I actually think you all answered that last question throughout all of your questions. The last question is, you know, what were some effective tactics you see for creating change? Um, I'm just gonna list what I heard. District, uh, district organizing, unions, South County, message, message, message. I had op-eds, developing a sense of urgency, media, stories of directly impacted people. Having uh, the whole county see this as a problem, getting other faces in the room with supervisors, not just me, John, Jose, like literally everyone here, meeting with county supervisors uh, and telling stories. Um, and so I just wanted to see if there were any last, like snippet, one, two-line remarks from our speakers before we open it up to Q and A. So we'll start with Yolanda.
If you want to really challenge where the Rosenbean settlement is going, which is creating a whole structure to do quote-unquote "mental health" in the jails, then you need to let the board know that the entire community is going to oppose that settlement. They're gonna pose at three hundred, three hundred and fifteen or fifty million dollars to the jail and that we want mental health outside the jail and then do it as relentlessly as we did Urban Shield. Because that is the only way that you're going to do that, that we're gonna bomb that settlement because that settlement is going to be heavily opposed by the community on all fronts because it's a crime. That would be a waste of money. It would only give the sheriff more power if he controlled that on his turf and we can't let that happen.
I have a question. Yolanda, is that what's known as the Babu decision?
There's not a Babu decision yet. What they've done, what, what Rosenbean and the sheriff have done is agreed to do this joint path together and they're negotiating on how that's gonna be done. So Rosenbean went to the board and said, we agree they should get this money. We're with the sheriff. And so the board gave them that money. And the community needs to say, we wanna pull the plug on it because our communities are hurting. We need that three hundred and fifty million dollars in the community now because you're criminalizing being homeless, you're criminalizing mental health problems. And we have these problems on the streets that need this focus and this is where the, the mental health should be. And if you don't, then we are gonna be really hurting because that money's gonna be gone and it's gonna, and everybody here knows it's gonna be wasted if we put it in the jails.
That's right. Yep, that's why we're here. Um, Lonnie, to you, last remark, quick, ten seconds.
Babu then, and, and dealing with that settlement, which is the three hundred million dollars, which should not be used in the jail, is a very important thing and it does tie in with Care First Jail Last. So um, maybe, anyway, which, food for thought. My final thought would be you have to, we have to build coalitions and they have to be district by district. And honestly, we need roadmaps of each district. Who, where are the liberal churches? I love one reason, um, FASMI and NAMI, which are the families of now, uh, people with mental illness because they are in every single district. And um, they can go talk to the, to the supervisors. But reaching out to labor, it really is a coalition so that we cannot be ignored in any of the districts.
Cynthia.
I mean, this is very self-serving, but I think we need to get people to be appointed to positions like the one I'm leaving. Um, you need staffers in there. It's a lonely place. And there are a few of us, you know, who like go in there, just like the supervisors. We really wanna figure out how to be a bridge and be the openers of doors as opposed to the gatekeepers. And I think supervisors, city council members, elected officials need to feel pressured to actually have community representation in offices with them and have organizers or policy experts or, you know, our community folks actually be in those offices. It's so important. And it is also exhausting, but it's absolutely necessary if we are to really win things in there. And um, yeah, I think that's one of the, one of the things that I leave us all with that. Um, when you, you know, in Oakland Rising, thought about how to figure out appointing people to different appointments, like boards, commissions, staffers, clerks even. You know, somebody asked about having meetings later, like the way we've done that is because in conversations with the clerks, they understand we need to have them later and they sort of volunteer to come in later. But their contracts are nine to five, so they're um, that, you know, I had a conversation with some of our folks who were doing good work in East Oakland where like, we, we need to constantly remind ourselves that the county is a resource that we as a community pay for. My salary is our community dollars. The supervisor salaries are our community dollars and we need to have community in there. And if we're not running our folks, then we need to get our folks appointed to these positions and support them. Or have them create their own cohort. A bunch of us do, but that would be my last thing. Everything else everyone said was brilliant and you all have so many of the answers.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So much love to the speakers. Um, and we are at seven thirty, so I do wanna note we are at time. But I wanna buy fifth, if you're down to stick around, I'm gonna open it up to Q and A. Uh, bu- bu- uh, sorry, I'm a little disorganized because I'm writing everything you're saying down. But before I open up to Q and A and before people leave, I do wanna let you know if you are in, and if you are active member in a DAC work group, um, please look at your email. We have a meeting later this week around responding to deaths in the jail. We need as much capacity as we can around this from media to outreach to all of the things. So please respond to Cynthia's email, Cynthia Nunez's email. Uh, the other thing is, please mark May tenth, uh, Monday at nine thirty AM in your calendars. That is the day tentatively that our Care First Resolution will be going to the Health Committee. Uh, once it gets recommended through the Health Committee, that's Chan and Carson, uh, they're on our side on that. It would go to the full board for a, uh, for a full vote. So stuff's moving, y'all. Last thing is that we are putting together a budget training for you all. Uh, we are studying the budget. I think some of you even saw that the sheriff had presented a sixty-one million dollar budget increase yesterday. We're studying, we are in budget meetings with the county, we're studying it and we are going to be doing a little teaching in May about that with you all and kind of fighting to be uh, getting some life-affirming resources this year and um, fight against increased share of spending. So those are all great things. We're gonna send this all to you. Please email Cynthia Nunez over here. Uh, if you wanna get involved in DAC, um, she will match you, play matchmaker and put you in a work group. So please, I'm gonna ask Cynthia Nunez to put your, her email in the chat so she can match you to a work group. And now we're gonna open it to Q and A. So do folks have any questions for our speakers or to DAC organizers? Asher, uh, we're also putting together, we're, we're a part of a budget training, there's a budget training team. So if you wanna be in the budget training team, you can join that too. Just hit me up.
Sign me up.
Okay, great.
You gotta teach me how to do first, though.
Okay, great. Um, any questions for Lonnie or Yolanda or Cynthia Munoz?
Okay, I'm gonna go eat dinner then.
We did it, yeah.
All right. And if people have questions, you know, get my email from Tash. I'm happy to answer them. But um, I, I would be really excited to fight the Babu Resolution and do community mental health. I mean, that would be a cool fight. I'm down.
Yeah, also, Yolanda is a huge part of why we don't hold people extra for ICE in Alameda Counties. So I know we're like focusing on certain parts of criminalization, but that was such a huge advance. And Yolanda, you were relentless and amazing and anyway, thank you.
All right. Good night.
Good night, everybody.